Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this August 16th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell? Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKinnon?
Here. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bermaner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Leading us in prayer this evening is Pastor Corwin Wong.
Let's read a short passage of scripture for these prayers. Pontius Pilate says to Jesus, "Do you refuse to speak to me? Don't you know that I have the authority to release you and the authority to crucify you?" Jesus answers, "You would have no authority over me at all if it hadn't been given you from above." I'm going to do those prayers. Father of heaven, I am here to affirm that all authority here on earth is given from above ultimately, that all authorities on earth submit to you, they'll have to give an account to you. And God, you are the most just, just assistant out there. You are holy, equitable, wholly just, and you judge all things right. For now, we ask for your wisdom to abuse this room, to lead these individuals as they lead this city, and Christ will be great. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Wong.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agendas presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Excuse me. Motion by Fryerson.
Excuse me.
I'm a brave man on a COVID brain. Fryerson, second by Holmes. Cloak, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number five, we have a special presentation by Dan Showman of Showman Incorporated. He's going to give us an update on our City of Zion government relations activity update.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Dave Nabel. It's an honor to be here. Just to give you an update, I haven't been here in a while to give you guys a report on what's going on in Springfield and with the City of Zion. So two of the key priorities right now for the city is the implementation of the Clean Energy Jobs Act. We've talked a lot about how there is, thanks to the work of our Lake County delegation in Springfield, there is going to be significant funding relief coming from that Clean Energy Jobs Act. The timeframe right now, the bill is in the implementation phase, and as far, the last thing we heard this week was that over the next couple of months, the state's going to be sending out the application for the city to file, but we don't have a specific timeframe of when money will start coming in from this law. But basically, the City of Zion qualifies for the program because we have a stranded nuclear plant that was decommissioned and is stored in waste. So that language was specifically put into the bill for Zion, and that is going to be a really good thing for the city. Could be up to $2 million a year once it's fully implemented, but that's probably not going to be fully implemented until the next year. The other thing we're working on is the governor put 100, the legislature, also the legislative caucus from Lake County put $122 million into the state rebuilt Illinois capital bill. So we have a formal request which is going in, $5 million, to make repairs to stormwater issues along Route 173 and 20th Street, and upsizing the storm sewer at 20th Avenue, or 20th Street and Canadian Avenue. So we're going to make this a priority to get this funding released over the next several months, but it's already in the budget. We just have to make this a high priority for the governor and for the legislature. Also, over the last several months, earlier, several months ago, three months ago, the Congress, United States Congress formally approved the $720,000 earmark for Zion for also for stormwater management and flood mitigation. At working with the Hart District, that money is now available for release and is being implemented. From the last two updates are, one of the big issues in Springfield is making sure local governments do not continue to be attacked by state government. There is a lot of proposals out there to, from the state that have been proposed by legislators that take away money from local governments. We were successful on two fronts. One is the local government distributive fund is going to be increasing slightly next year, not as much as we want, because right now, the state, it used to be the state, the local share of the state income tax was 10%, now it's down to 6.5%. So we're going to continue to fight going forward to increase that share because the state is taking an unfair percentage of the state income tax when that was created. So, but the good thing is, the governor had proposed cutting this, and we were able to restore it and we'll get a slight increase from annual $2.6 million that the City of Zion receives annually. The other thing is, there was a proposal in Springfield that's not in this report to limit tax increment financing districts. Not only the village administrator, but the village attorney got all over it. We worked with a lot of communities that are very concerned about this. Some of the school districts are pushing for tip for form because they, against municipalities, especially in the northwest suburbs. Well, we were successful in killing that bill, but it's going to be coming back. Tax increment financing districts are one of the only economic development tools for suburban communities, so we have to continue to support that. So the General Assembly does not return until November 15th, which is after the election. On November 8th, during the election, all 177 seats of the Illinois General Assembly are up for election, and also the governor and statewide constitutional officers, and all the legislators are running in new districts. So it's going to be a challenging year. So now that COVID is semi-over, you know, we'll be bringing the mayor down to Springfield and Dave Nabel to make sure that we continue to fight for money, because there's going to be new, there's going to be for sure a new senator for this area, and so we're going to be at the table to make sure and represent the city. Any questions from any of the commissioners?
Can the public ask a question? Can the public ask a question? And what did you say is in Springfield? What issues is, is this ideal or what? Because if not releasing any money in Springfield?
Are you talking about? You're talking about?
CJ hasn't released any money?
Well, CJ is currently being implemented, so it takes about a year to implement major legislation like that. So the money will be coming out of the Department of Commerce.
So?
So we've already contacted them.
So you should explain to the, to the public, to these commissioners, that this money that you just announced, it ain't coming right away.
Well, I think we understand that, and he did explain that.
Yeah.
He mentioned that it wouldn't be until next year.
No, but we're, we're on top of it. When the money does become available, we're going to be the first people to get it. We just have to, the way that the law is implemented, it takes about a year for the official rules to be established. So I appreciate that question, but we're going to stay on top of it. But some stuff is being released in Springfield and some things are not, but this one is moving forward.
All right. Commissioners? All right. Any questions, Frank? No questions, all right.
Thank you.
Dan, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Item number six, citizens' comments. I'm having a tough time reading this, but is it Eric Johnson?
Yes.
With citizen comments, please know that even coming up to the podium, that the comments are limited to three minutes, and if there are any questions to be answered, if there's any questions, they'll probably answer it at a later time to move the city council moving forward.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm with a group called Industrial Outdoor Ventures. Been here, this is my third time here now, so I don't want, you know, to take up too much time here, but our group's proposing to put up 22,500 square feet on about 35 hand acres at Russell Road in Green Bay Road. The facilities will serve as both office and maintenance facilities. They'd be fully paved, fenced, lit, secured, and we're proposing to, on spec, so we do not have the current tenants right now, but if we are successful tonight, we kick off a formal design work, we're through the same process, we're through the accounting process, and then kick off our monthly campaign as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thank you. John Anderson?
This is Joel. Excuse me. Oh, I thought maybe you guys were going to talk when this thing about the chuffing came up. My name is Joel Anderson, and I live at 43245 Freeman Road, which is kitty corner from this proposed chuffing facility. I just wanted to say that I'm not sure this is the right place for considering the spoke of the proposed facility, and I'd like to know more about what's being planned, and I assume that that's going to be discussed later on the agenda. We had some bad experiences going Green Bay Road, and one of them was about 40 years ago, my father sold the property across the street from our house, turned out to be a landfill from the coal plant. It was so terrible. Took a long time to get that cleared up. We've also had some problems with a lot of odors from the dump. Fortunately, we got the golf course between the dump and where I live now, so that's better. So I'm just concerned about some of the things that are going to happen where we don't know exactly what's going to be in that facility. And since it's on spec, we wonder what's going to be, who's going to be operating it, what's going to be happening here, and we want to be sure that it's not going to be some truck party with trucks bringing it into the garbage dump. So I'm thinking about the impact of 1,000 trucks coming and going at all offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Clyde Mclemore?
Clyde Mclemore, Black Lives Matter Lake County. First of all, I want to invite everybody here to the second annual Black Expo Saturday August 27, 2022. That's the, August is the month of Black Business Month. Support your black businesses. There will be an expo, second one here in Lake County at Wootriss Mall down there, I'll pass that deal here. Mayor, I'd like to address you. Last week, they had a stop, violence, the state's attorney did something concerning the violence, he wanted to hear from the public. And I spoke, right? And when I spoke, I said, "Well, every mayor should be here." Of course, you wasn't there. I know you came later, but we, Zion experienced their first murder of this year, and we've been getting shootouts every, every other week we getting one here in Zion. I mean, it's happening all over Lake County. You know, Tri-Cities, Zion or Chicago, Zion, I mean Zion or Chicago and Waukeah. The thing of it is, I think this is very important, that you should have been there instead of photo ops, because on photo ops, you there on time. But here, we need to hear what's going on and what the people want to hear. See, first thing people say is black-on-black crime. Ain't no such thing as black-on-black crime. It's called community crime, because we put it to these different communities, and through these different communities, there's no resources, there's no education. You know, the education is bad and everything. So that's why I did it. It's called community crime. More whites killed whites than blacks killed blacks. But at the same time, I think you, as the mayor, should have been there to hear, because one of the biggest things is that we getting so much crime, is mental health. And I, I forbid what happened in Highland Park on July 4th, but 860 crisis councils dissented on Highland Park, and we getting shot around here, shootout every other week, and we got, we can't get one crisis counselor around here, you know? And I am really upset by it, and I'm talking to the audience, because I'm talking to you, I'm talking to the whole city of Zion. This is where I live at. Even though my office is in Waukeah, I live in Zion. You know, I started here in Zion, and I think Zion is my number one priority, and I think that you should be a part of that. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Mclemore. So let me straighten you out real quick.
You gotta straighten me out. You talk, see, your governor, first of all.
You've had your three minutes.
Yeah.
So you've had three minutes. You've had three minutes, so you can do a couple things. You can listen to me talk, and if you don't like what I've got to say, you can get up and leave. I was there for four hours, listening to people talk about crimes in our community. Four days a week, that man and I sit down and talk about all the issues within this community. You want to talk about violence? Why do I read about you and violence in every community, in Wisconsin, everywhere? Don't tell me my job. I know my job.
Who are you?
I know my, you got no network doing.
My lines, that's what I do.
Well, okay. Well, you've got a lot of credibility in that area, and I don't need to hear your comments, but I was there, that meeting was told, I was told about that meeting on Monday. Monday. Thursday, my schedule is already booked, so I got there when I was through. We have a lot more to do than be able to go to pop-up meetings. I've been working with the governor's office, I've been working with the state's attorney office, behind the scenes on that gun violence prevention initiative. So don't tell me what I'm doing because you don't know. You don't know.
But we getting shootouts.
Well, you know what?
We getting shootouts here.
Well, you know what?
Because people are unsafe here. I'm unsafe. Y'all get tired of this.
Well, we.
You know, I ain't wanting you, you could just push that around. I've been talking to the state's attorney.
Well, good for you. Good for you. We've been talking about it too, and Ms. Lear, who is a resident here, said one thing. Everyone wants to blame the city officials and the police for what's happening, and I never hear you, never hear you talking about the kids that have guns at 15 and 17-year-olds shooting each other up.
Chief Riley, have I not personally called you?
Enough. We're moving on with, we're moving on with the meeting.
Yeah.
You can go, you can go grandstand elsewhere. We've got our city under control, and we are working on it, and we really don't need your help.
Your government ain't good.
Well, we don't need your help. You don't know what my government's in. I don't need your credibility. None of us do. You have none.
All right.
Item number seven, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes, a regular meeting held on August 2nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on August 2nd, 2022 at 7:50 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries.
Consent agenda, 7B, bills, vouchers 1-4, 1-1, 8-6 through 1-4, 1-2, 7-4, drawn on Huntington National Bank in A, total $1,093,422.07.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Fryerson. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries. Before we go to item 7C, I want to go back to a public comment that was sent in. Excuse me for getting things out of line. This is from a resident named Lashandra Barnes. She says, "I've been a resident of Zion for many years. The ordinance which established the rental house inspection and certification program, in my personal opinion, has proven to be unsuccessful and ineffective. Approximately two weeks after my current residence was inspected and issued a certificate of compliance from the city inspector, I signed a lease to rent my current home with my landlord on 10/31/2021. At move-in, there were many unsafe and unsanitary conditions in the home that were not documented during the city's inspection. This leading me to believe the inspection was not fully and thoroughly completed. Some issues that were present were a very dirty filter and incorrectly sized filter in the HVAC system, as well as rusted crack pipes connected to the furnace and chimney. There was also a pest infestation issue prior to move-in. This is very disappointing and has truly compromised the health and safety of my family. The rental house certification program is supposed to ensure that life and safety issues are monitored and repaired to protected citizens. What changes will be made to place stricter guidelines on your city inspectors to ensure the thoroughness, quality, and consistency of inspections, as well as the proper documentation and transparency of all parties involved? What precautions will be taken to ensure that families' health and safety are not risked by living in homes that should have been passed the city's inspection in the first place? How will you measure the effectiveness of these improvements once implemented?" That was something that came in online that has to be read, and I'm sure our building department will address that issue. Moving on to item number C. Is a resolution for the proclamation of Buddy Poppy Days on September 9th, 10th, and 11th, whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veteran of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veteran of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, Mayor Billy McKinnon, and the city councilors of the City of Zion do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through donations for Buddy Poppies on the days set aside September 9th, 10th, and 11th, 2022, for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. Be it further resolved that the Zion City Council urges all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Poppy as moot evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens, dated this March 16th, day of August 2022. Item number eight, consider passing resolutions as follows. The first resolution is to honor our razzle-dazzle twirling team that went to the Netherlands and won the world championship. What an incredible feat for our razzle-dazzle team. They had a welcoming ceremony last week at the high school, which a lot of people attended. We didn't have the opportunity to invite the razzle-dazzle to this particular city council meeting, but we will have them here and their families within the next couple of city council meetings in September. The resolution of commendation states as follows, whereas the razzle-dazzles, a baton twirling corps, is sponsored by the Zion Park District and performed under the direction of Laura Spade, assisted by Don Camille, Christie Carner, and Mackenzie Rush, and whereas on July 28, 2022, the Razzle-Dazzles Twirling Corps won gold in the parade corps division at the world championships, and whereas on July 28, 2022, the WFNBT-A World Baton Twirling Championships were held at the Eindhoven, the Netherlands, and the Razzle-Dazzles Twirling Corps captured the world championship title. A title bestowed upon all members of the corps, being Catherine Boffer, Alexis Christensen, Joelle Claudio Martinez, Elena Giamo, Alyssa Gonzalez, Faith Huston, Maggie Mae McCarthy, Marissa McClellan, Danielle McDonald, Lily Musich, Sarah Musich, Sarah Ando, Bella Prizlak, Madison Rogers, Skylar Schneider, Avery Shogren, Abigail Smith, Kayla Smith, Rowan Smith, Mackenzie Wax, Samantha Zerimba, and Tiffany Zerimba. And whereas the hard work and perseverance, perseverance, perseverance of the Razzle-Dazzles have earned for the corps and the City of Zion through their achievements, great honor and respect. Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the City of Zion that on behalf of our citizens, we express gratitude and our heartfelt congratulations to the Razzle-Dazzles and their directors and sponsors for their outstanding performance and great achievements, as dated this 16th day of August 2022.
I have a cousin, Madison Rogers, that's part of that group.
Absolutely, and she has been invited back to the championships in England for next year.
I was just about to say that.
And so she's, she's, I went to the welcoming home ceremony, and I was so impressed with the maturity of these, these young ladies, and their ability to get up and speak in front of a mic at an early age, which can absolutely be paralyzing sometimes. So we look forward to their continued success and continued support from our community. Item number eight.
Yes. We have to have a motion, a second on that?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions or comments from the commissioners? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 8B, resolutions of commendation Zion Public Safety Personnel for Mayor McKinnon. This was from our fire chief, Chief Shree. Says, "Quite often our fire EMS and police dispatchers are overlooked following the mitigation of critical incidents. In fact, they are the very first link in the chain of events that occurs when someone calls 911 for assistance. They are the first to encounter panic calls of those in trouble, and on March 25th, that was certainly the case. Our dispatchers took the calls from trapped occupants in a house fire and calmly and confidently handled the situation like the professionals that they are. We commend them for the work they do, not just answering the phone when someone calls, but helping calm them and providing aid while ensuring the proper responses dispatched to the emergency. Thank you for the hard work you do alongside our first responders." And this resolution of commendation have been presented to the following people, Scott Evans, Jamie Fisher, Megan Hatman, Jordan Jones, and Brent Cuffel, for your dedication to the preservation of the public health and safety of the citizens of the City of Zion, Illinois, and for your actions on March 25th, 2022, as members of the Germany and Zion Fire EMS Police Dispatch Center. Outstanding performance. This is dated on the 16th day of March, excuse me, of August 2022 at Zion, City of Zion. And is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson, second by?
Second.
By Holmes. Questions or comments? And since we have the certificates here, we'd like to hand them out at this time. And since we have the certificates here, would we like to hand them out at this time? Scott Evans?
Scott could not be here. I think I looked it up before. All right. All right. Jamie Fisher? All right. There you go, Jamie. Chief photo bombing in there. All right. Megan? Did I get this correct? Or proper connection? Eight. I got it. There you go. That's good. All right. There you go. Jordan Jones. Right. All right. Thank you, Greg.
Mayor, could I just say just a real quick thing?
Yeah.
I called them late, but they still were able to come. Joanne and Robert Schultz were the victims of that house fire that we marched, so we just want to welcome them. Please feel free to join us, and just wanted to say good to see you guys.
I just want to thank everybody that showed up and brought me back to life because I was in cardiac arrest. The officers back there, I wanted to talk to them later on, and I really appreciate everything you do.
Well, we're glad you're safe and sound.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to say, on behalf of all of our first responders, we have some more commendations. Sometimes the words that are put on paper that we express don't express the thanks that we have for what you do, because whenever something happens, you run towards danger. And you are here to help people, and that's a message that we are trying to get out with our residents, some that sometimes don't have a good foundation to trust the police based on maybe social media or past experience, but our police force and our fire and our EMS people are here to help protect our citizens. That's their sworn duty, and we thank you for everything that you do in each and every day, and we're thankful that you and your family are safe.
Thank you, sir.
The next commendations come from our police department. Sergeant Hooker, this is from Chief Barton. Sergeant Hooker and Sergeant Richard submitted a letter of commendation for multiple officers and detectives related to a structural fire call. The commendations were entered into their personnel file. However, Officers Manuel Rivera and Von Bush were singled out specifically for recommendation of receiving the life-saving award as a result of their actions on this call. On March 25th, 2022, all available officers were dispatched for a report of a structure fire with three people trapped in the basement. Upon arrival, heavy smoke was observed, and the caller said she was trapped in the basement. Officers were unable to adequately see or make entry due to the heavy smoke. Officer Bush was diligently checking around the basement exterior, calling out trying to locate the caller. He was able to break out a small window to the basement and located the 18-year-old caller, who he assisted to safely, safety. Officer Bush then spoke with her, obtained and relayed additional information to other officers. Shortly after, Zion Fire Department had arrived unseen and removed an unresponsive dog from the front doorway that Detective Sage had tried to rescue but was unable due to heavy smoke. Officer Manuel Rivera performed CPR on the dog with the assistance of Officer Gonzalez, and the dog was transported to an animal hospital. Zion Fire Department also located and rescued a 62-year-old male inside the living room, who they removed from the house and performed CPR. They brought the male to the front yard and went back to see if anyone was in the house. Officer Manuel Rivera noticed that the 62-year-old male appeared to no longer be breathing and immediately began CPR on him. He performed CPR for almost three full minutes until being relieved by a firefighter, who located vitals and ensured the patient was taken to an ambulance. Overall, all officers present unseen performed exceptionally well in the service of the citizens of the City of Zion and striving for preservation of lives. Officer Rivera and Officer Bush exemplified the spirit of service and dedication in their performance, and we would like to honor them with some commendations if they would step forward.
Just want to say, good job, Von. Since you left the library, you're killing it.
Saving it. Saving it.
A couple more commendations. Sergeant Ware and Sergeant Von submitted a letter of recommendation for Officers Matt Duchemin and Kevin Haggerty. The commendations were entered into their personnel file. The following is a synopsis for recognizing Officer Duchemin and Officer Haggerty for the life-saving outstanding performance award. On October 11th, 2021, Zion officers were dispatched to a call of a possible stabbing. As Officer Haggerty and Officer Duchemin arrived, they saw a female stumble from the house and collapse on the front porch. She was severely injured from multiple wounds and was the victim of a brutal attack. Officer Duchemin immediately began to render medical aid as Officer Haggerty placed himself between the victim and the unknown danger area. Based on the severity of her wounds, Officer Duchemin was solely focused on aid, which required his full attention, and Officer Haggerty maintained security of them both since they believed the offenders were still present inside. Both officers, Haggerty and Duchemin acted bravely with their primary concern being aid and protection of the victim. Both are recognized for their bravery and outstanding performance in the face of a brutal crime, as they both act selflessly to protect one another. If you gentlemen would step forward. Officer Haggerty?
Officer Duchemin? Haggerty couldn't be here tonight.
All right.
Don't you get to take his? His too? You get to now.
Sergeant Hooker and Sergeant Richard submitted a letter of commendation for Officers Von Bush and J.J. Yu. The commendations were entered into their personnel file. The following is a synopsis for recognizing Officer Bush and Officer Yu for the outstanding performance award. On December 1st, 2021, officers responded to a call of a man shot. Officer Bush and Officer Yu located two victims, both suffering from multiple gunshot wounds. While both had serious injuries, one victim was unresponsive and not breathing and without a pulse. Officer Bush and Officer Yu pulled a victim from his vehicle and began CPR and medical aid until Zion Fire and Rescue arrived, gaining a pulse and allowing for transport to a hospital. Although the victim ultimately passed away, the timely action and quick medical aid furnished by Officer Bush and Officer Yu were above and beyond their normal duties in preventing immediate death. Von Bush and Officer Yu, if you would step forward. The next is a certificate of meritorious recognition presented to Detective Nicholas Richards on the occasion of Zion City Council. Where Detective Richards has served the City of Zion as a police officer with dedication and honor since 2013, whereas Detective Richards was promoted to the rank of detective where he has served in the Investigation Bureau since 2017 and is currently the agency investigator assigned to the Lake County Major Crime Task Force. Whereas Detective Richards is responsible for the investigation and remediation of serious crimes committed within the jurisdiction of the City of Zion and the state of Illinois. Whereas on January 27, 2022, Detective Richards was appointed to be the lead detective in an investigation into an organized criminal enterprise based in and operating out of the City of Zion. Whereas the crimes perpetrated by this criminal enterprise has included burglary, drug dealing, unlawful weapons possessions, property theft, identity theft, vehicular hijacking, flamed police, and aggravated discharges of fire within and throughout five counties in both Illinois and Wisconsin. Whereas Detective Richards coordinated a multi-jurisdictional response which required hundreds of man-hours of physical and electronic surveillance, the application and execution of over a dozen search warrants, scores of witnesses, interviews, and suspect interrogations, and thousands of pages of documentation. Whereas the investigation reached its pinnacle on February 25th, 2022, with the simultaneous execution of two high-risk search wardens for the arrest of the principal suspects, one of whom was armed and barricaded himself in the bathroom, prompting a five-hour standoff with police, but ultimately ended successfully with an arrest. Whereas the results of the investigation yielded multiple felony charges in Zion for burglary, theft, drugs, and weapons, as well as more than 60 additional felony charges from outside agencies. Whereas in addition to dismantling a serious organized criminal enterprise, Detective Richards' work on this case collectively cleared Zion streets of nine illegal firearms, four stolen vehicles, hundreds of pills containing fentanyl, powder, and crack cocaine, as well as illegally possessed cannabis. Now therefore, it be resolved that on behalf of the City of Zion and the state of Illinois, I take great pleasure in recognizing and honoring Detective Nick Richards for fulfilling the mission of the Zion Police Department in keeping the city safe and free from those who could do it harm. Your work, dedication, and leadership is truly deserving of the respect, admiration, and accommodation of the City of Zion, Lieutenant Paul Curly, an investigative commander. Yep. Yep. All right. Now that we've made the presentations, is there a motion to approve these?
So move.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Fisher.
We actually have a second by Holmes.
Okay.
No, I didn't say anything.
No, we did it ahead of time for the initial for EMT. So it's all under one motion.
Apparently I did.
Questions or comments from our commissioners?
I mean, I'll just say thank you. I mean, it's, being in this position over the past year or so and being able to see what you do up close and personal, I mean, it gives me a newfound respect for the work that you put in day in, day out, the toll that it can take on families, and just the commitment that I see to the community. Proud to be in this position, proud to work with you, and excited for what will come. So, thank you.
I was just going to add to that. Sometimes it's said that you guys, guys and women, have thankless jobs. I just want to say thank you for everything that you all do.
All right.
I don't think I can add anything to that.
Yeah, we do appreciate you. As some of you know, I try to stop by all the different departments each week and talk to the officers. I see them out on the street every day. We go around to the schools, and we talk to the students and the people here and assure them that what we are trying to do to keep our community safe. And as we always know, there are some people in the community that have no idea the commitment of time that we put in to these positions. There's always going to be complaints, there's always going to be critics, but I know this from working with everyone in here, or every department head in here, and our employees, no one expects more from us than what we expect from ourselves, and we are not looking to be validated by anyone outside of our organization. It's always easy to criticize, but we're here every single day working to find solutions to improve our community. So thank you for what you do and your tireless commitment to what it takes to be in law enforcement here in the City of Zion. Item number nine, considered.
Can I vote? We have to take a vote?
I think we did, didn't we?
No.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, motion carries. For zip. Consider passing ordinance as follows, A 9A extending a special use permit for a 2.5 megawatt direct current, 2 megawatt alternate current fixed tilt ground mounted community solar project for Director Ianson.
Ladies and gentlemen, Zion CS LLC is presently six months attached to the special use permit for the community solar project located at 47029667 heat screen. We're still working with the state, the Department of Homeland Security, but they're requesting six months extension.
Is this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, motion carries. Someone just...
Those in the audience, I believe there may be pizza. It's not there, it's coming, so.
And before we move on, let me apologize to our residents for my outburst. I do not allow being approached by class clowns and being accused of not doing everything in my absolute power. in my absolute power and working with everyone to make this community safe. Here's a man that comes in here and criticizes us for the last eight years since I've been on the commissioner. And if you look at his rap sheet, he's not a Zion resident, he doesn't belong here. My mother used to say something, she had a sign in our house, right above the door says, "Everyone that steps into this house brings joy, some by staying and some by leaving." Item number 10, discussion authorization and approval. 10A, consider approval of IPRF safety grant purchases per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Every year when we renew our workers' comp insurance, they provide us with a grant to purchase items, equipment, things that would help reduce future workers' comp claims and injuries. The amount of that grant was $84,986 for the 2022 year. Due to supply chain issues, delays on purchasing things, we're still working on finalizing the budget, but we wanted to go ahead and get the orders started on these items, knowing that it's gonna, there's gonna be significant lag from order to delivery. So I wanted to get those before you for approval so I can include those in the budget. This is a net zero cost, this is, all these items that are listed here are covered by the grant, but we do need council approval to authorize the purchase. Some of the big items that make up the grant are a Lucas CPR device, we purchased one the last year, and it's been very beneficial for our paramedics to serve residents. We also have ballistic vests that we would like to purchase for our firefighters, paramedics as well, to make sure that we ensure their continued safety, especially in difficult scenes as a response, so that I can focus on, again, on the residents and victims while also protecting their, managing their own safety. And then we've also got some public works, chain hoists for lifting large items and equipment to, again, prevent injury and keep them all safe. And then some miscellaneous police department purchases for air cleaning, remediation, and some ballistic blankets, things of that nature. But again, the total of those listed purchases is for $84,986, and I would recommend approval as presented.
I'll make that motion for approval of the IPRF safety grant purchase.
Well, second? Motion by Fryerson, second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
I had a question on the ballistic vests, the 40. Are those replacing or in addition to?
Those are actually, we have some right now, but they're not properly fitted to individuals, and we don't quite have enough. We're getting to the end of life of some of those, and we don't want to inhibit movement, so we're just basically resupplying, ensuring that every employee has one that fits properly to their, to their needs.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries. So, four zip. Item 10B, tabulation of bids, purchase and installation of sewage grinder per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. The bid opening for the purchase and installation of the sewage grinder was held on July 5th. The city has received one bid from Bowler Construction Company. The bid amount received was $182,400. The estimated cost was $100,000, and that was our budgeted amount we put in for this item. Currently, the staff is investigating alternative resolutions other than the sewage grinder. However, we would still request and recommend rejecting this bid from Bowler and requesting to re-advertise the bids at a later date.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to reject the bid from Bowler Construction and re-advertise.
All right. Motion by Fisher, second by Fryerson. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item number 10C, tabulation of bids, environmental consulting services per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city received two responsive bids for environmental consulting services for 27th Street in Galilee. First bid was D3 Companies, $29,350. Second was Deegan Group, $35,000. Second, Director Weyman, the lowest responsible bidder, D3 Companies, $29,350. This is a requirement of the EPA, is going to be funded by the government. End result is hopefully the city will have a remediation by the second.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Holmes, second by Fryerson. Questions or comments?
Just one question. Hasn't Deegan Group been usually our default on this project?
They were involved with demolition, yes, when it came to remediation.
Okay.
So is this the last step in kind of being able to move forward with that site?
Yes, if we can get a move, move forward with remediation.
And the site in question is 20711 Galilee. There was the Munder Building there that was vacant and abandoned.
2771?
Yeah, 2771, thank you. Was abandoned for 40-plus years, it was a real eyesore in our community. And we worked with the county to get grant money to be able to tear it down, and we're also working with the county to also tear the building down that's on 27th Street across from Central Middle School. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item 10D, tabulation of bids, cleaning and maintenance services for City Hall Police Administration and Public Works per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city received five responsive bids for the cleaning maintenance service for City Hall Police Administration and Public Works. VMG Quality Services, $38,000. Lake County Cleaning Service, $46,800. Multi-System Management, $49,440. Bravo Services, $55,500. Total Facility Maintenance, $63,624.96. Staff is recommending the lowest responsible bidder, VMG Quality Services, for $38,400.
Is there a motion to accept the bids for the cleaning and maintenance services?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher? Second by Holmes. Questions or comments?
Is Echo Clean the bidder from the last round?
Yes.
And you've heard the question.
Yeah, do you have any insights as to why the wide range of discrepancy on the bid prices?
Why such a big range, you said?
Yeah.
A lot of companies came in from South suburbs in Chicago.
Got it. So is VMG a local company?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item 10E, tabulation of bids, sale of surplus property, surplus real estate per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city received two responsive bids for 281931 Street and 031st Street. Afonso Patton, bid $1,500 for the 281931 Street, and he also bid $1,500 for 031st Street. Staff is recommending we accept both bids for $15, each for the surplus properties.
Is there a motion to accept the sale of the surplus real estate?
Some moved.
Some moved by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions? I just have one question. Do we have any additional surplus real estate, or is that about it?
We have a couple small lots, but that's pretty much it.
Okay.
So the dimensions on this, this is a buildable lot, I'm seeing .21 acres, is that right?
Yeah, these are buildable lots.
And is there a requirement of when someone has to build on these lots after purchase?
They, there is a due assurance where they ask you to remain vacant, if they do new build, they ask to be owner-identified for these twenty years.
Twenty years? Thank you.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item 10F, consider zoning docket 22Z-9 and ordinance requesting a text amendment to Section 102-99, parentheses D, of the Zion Municipal Code to allow a truck, commercial vehicle, and commercial equipment parking facility with the issuance of a special use permit per Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just my memo for you, the staff has requested a text amendment to Section 102-99, the Zion Municipal Code, to allow truck, commercial vehicle, and commercial equipment partnership for a facility with the issuance of a special use permit. At the June 2nd, 2022, by the zoning commission, they recommend to approve the text.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Director Ianson, there's a young lady here that asked questions about that facility. Could you take a few moments to answer those questions about her concerns?
The interest is only going to be all possible and contribution, we don't make this off Green Bay. They did do a traffic study, in terms of the ability of less than a second difference in the traffic barriers and intersections in the area. They did, they have provided a thorough study, showed there was no violation of the issue of the local regulations, and they also provided a security plan of the facility, security sites, cameras, app, and fencing. So I think they covered some of your questions.
And the fencing, what kind of fencing will it be, Director?
In that zoning district, they go up to eight feet, but that would be a limitation. They could put up natural curtains and stuff too, but the heat feet would be the max on fence, less than a quarter turn.
And will they put up, some of the companies usually will put up some kind of mesh screening around the fence so that, to kind of keep any dust in or whatever, or kind of hide the facility?
Yeah, they could do natural screen, or provide screen on the fence, yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
I was gonna say, one of the questions posed as well at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was the lighting for the facility. They talked about, it should not be impacting residents because the lighting will be projected. You correct me, sir, because he's still here. Will not be visually impacting the residents there.
Actually, City Code doesn't allow it to go more than a foot deep up past the block, so I don't want to see it past the block.
All those trees that are there along Green Bay, type of state, or will be looking at state?
I'm not familiar with the tree line, that's in the right of the west, but those will see it.
That's the...
All right. Thank you, Director Ianson, Commissioner Holmes, for those questions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item number 10G, consider zoning docket 22Z8 and ordinance requesting a special use permit to operate a truck parking and maintenance facility at 200 Green Bay Road per Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. IOB Associates LLC is requesting a special use permit to operate a truck parking, maintenance facility at 200 Green Bay Road. Traffic coming into the site will only be all across the road at Trumpa Park Drive to the north, and 9th Street and Trumpa Drive to the south. This will be fully secured, secured site with staff and cameras. August 4, 2022, by the zoning commission, they recommend to approve the special.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries. Item number 10H, consider zoning docket 22Z11 and ordinance requesting a variance from Section 102-32A6 of the Zion Municipal Code for the minimum setback for new garage for property at 2717 Emus Avenue per Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. V. L. C. is seeking a variance from Section 102-32A6 of the Zion Municipal Code for the minimum setbacks of new garage. Due to the angle of the property line, is unable to meet the three-foot setback requirement on the northeast corner of the driveway. The variance will be approximately eight feet from the garage to the left. At August 4, 2022, by the zoning commission, they recommend to approve the variance.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Some moved by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item number 10I, consider zoning docket 22Z12 and ordinance requesting a variance from Section 102-32V of the Zion Municipal Code for the minimum setback for a new addition for property at 2715 Emus Avenue per Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Danny Meyer is seeking a variance from Section 1232V of the Zion Municipal Code for the minimum setback for a new addition. Due to the angle of the property line, is unable to meet the three-foot setback requirement on the southeast side of the lot. If there is additional setback, it would probably be one foot from the property line. At August 4, 2022, by the zoning commission, they recommend to approve the variance.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries, four zip. Item number 10J, consider zoning docket 22Z13 and ordinance requesting a variance from Section 102-91B of the Zion Municipal Code to continue the existing setback for the principal building and the accessory buildings located in the Light Manufacturing District for property, 2415 23rd Street per Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Wong is here, is seeking a variance from Section 1232V of the Zion Municipal Code to continue the existing setbacks of the principal building and accessory buildings located at 2415 23rd Street in the Light Manufacturing District. At August 4, 2022, by the zoning commission, they recommend to approve the variance.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fryerson. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
I guess just to be clear, Director Ianson, so this is no change, this is just about the change of ownership for the property, is that...
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
No, thank you, sir.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye, motion carries. Number 11, departmental commentary. Director Ianson?
I want to hear a speech again.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. Think you've heard that before.
I just want to thank your way to show up in the Zion community that was successful, shared all the resources that are there, and I got some of the new work to do.
Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Couple of updates on some projects. 21st Street from Green Bay to the Green Road is now closed, that will be closed until the end of September. County is replacing a culvert, so it's only open to through traffic. 27th Street, if you haven't seen, they started doing some concrete work that will continue into next week. I have not received a schedule for the paving side yet, as soon as I will, I will get that posted up on our state website. 20, our 2022 street and alley program is within a punch list now, so we had 1.2 miles of road streets and alleys that were reconditioned, reconstructed underneath this program. So we had six Sydney Street blocks that were completed, and four alleys that were completed under this reconstruction project. Some, a storm was added on the alley over at Hebron, so that was some additional work there. The new water main project is fully online, still waiting for a schedule on the reconstruction of the alley due to all that construction. That's 2,000 mero feet of water main that's been replaced and 50 new services. That's 2,000 mero feet of water main that's been replaced and 50 new services. Joppa Alley, we're still waiting to schedule for that reconstruction of the alley. All storm work is complete. So now, it's the same contractor doing the paving in the alleys for the alley for water main that's doing Joppa, too. I'm sure they'll work that schedule at the same time.
Is that the, just a question, is that the alleyway that we've been waiting for money for several years?
Yes, sir. That's Joppa Alley, that's four blocks, four blocks of alley. Some new storm, that was the DECO grant.
Yes, and that was, Senator Bush helped us to get that grant, and it took...
Nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Yes, nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and it took almost three years for us to get the money?
Three years. But we got money.
And again, it goes to my point, when people are ill-informed about how government works, it's not about what we're not doing. It's taking the three years for the state of Illinois to get us that money that was promised to us several years ago. So we work, City Administrator Naval and our city attorney, we call the state and our representatives all the time about getting this money quicker so that we can handle the issues that are facing our residents. But one thing I think we've come to know, people want everything right now. They want it right now, and we would love to give it right now. We would love to solve all the issues with the city just like this, but we can't. It takes time, and it's a process. But those that are ill-informed just don't understand that. Director Roberts, any other comments?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you. Chief Street?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just another public and official thank you to the dispatchers and police officers who went above and beyond their duties on those incidents, as they quite often do. But also, a big thank you to our SDA personnel and our building department personnel, public works personnel, quite often help on those scenes as well, and don't get much recognition on that as well. So thank you to all involved. Also, a thank you to Exelon. They were at our station yesterday presenting us with a donation check. We appreciate their community support. It's going to help us with some training items that we don't have budgeted. So thank you, Dex.
Well, Chief Street, again, just a, again, a thank you from all of us for the work that you do and working with our residents. We get a lot of call volumes from our police and fire and rescue. And in my time here, you've been incredibly professional. And what's great about it, sometimes our citizens don't always come forward and thank us publicly, but they do privately, and that sometimes it really makes, it makes our day.
Sure, thank you.
So thank you, Chief, for being such a professional. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I will echo the chief's comments about everything that he said. I do have a few other things. But I also want to thank this board for putting up with us. I know there was a lot of stuff going on tonight, and some of those commendations were pretty old. As we transitioned administrations, there were some things that I wanted to put in place, and I wanted to make sure that things were orderly and we weren't duplicating some of the work and acknowledging and writing some of the things that we should. So thank you for this board to entertain those things. It means a lot to my folks that I work with. I will say a couple other things referencing a citizen comment earlier tonight. I was also at that meeting, the town hall meeting, for four hours, and I listened to a lot of comments. I will echo a comment that was made by a community member here that these things don't happen in a vacuum, and these, a lot of these problems and these issues start at home. And we, as parents, need to address those things with our own children and start there first. Police Department, I promise you, will do everything that we can, and not to be cowl us, but it's not entirely our capability to handle some of these issues. We have legal restrictions and boundaries that we have to maintain. So it starts at home, and we are facing adversity at all levels and all different angles. Just tonight, I spoke with a community member heavily involved in the sheriff's office who stated that they just recently had posted a testing for police officers, for sheriff deputies. And out of 200, roughly 60 candidates that applied, 53 or 56, I can't remember the exact number, made it to the final. Basically, one-fifth of the eligible candidates made it to the final. That's tremendously difficult. When we're seeing an uptick and an uprise in early retirement due to some of the legislation that was recently passed, and the constraints that that's put on some individuals, and if they've simply decided to retire early, I think the statistics on that are about 22% increase in early retirement. That's tremendously impactful in a negative way for the men and women that I work with because that takes away, strips away our experience and longevity. And, you know, when we get new police officers, these officers, they come in and they have, Maverick probably says, lights the world on fire. But it takes those old, salty dogs to weather them and tame them, so to speak. And it's frustrating to hear some of the comments, and I know those comments are definitely not shared by most of this community, if not 99% of this community. But we are doing our best, Mr. Mayor, and we're trying to combat these unfortunate, very violent acts that we see life by our hand. It's a challenge, so we're going to continue to fight that fight and continue to hire as quality officers as we can. That said, we will be starting our, I guess I'm going to call it our merged list testing process. We've adopted a new list and TICs and recruit younger people on a regular basis so that they're not waiting for a two-year cycle for hirings. We'll be starting that in the next couple of months, towards the end of the year, and we'll be doing that as a quarterly testing opportunity for police officers going forward until we have a solid list that's well-established and we can...
Thank you, Chief. Your comments, as you know, your department is really supported by everything that we're doing here with the council level and with our citizens. And I hear this phrase of mental health being thrown around, and when people come through the podium and they talk about what options are available. I work with the United Way on their 211 Advisory Board, and 211 is something that we've been pushing out since the pandemic. So people with mental health issues, if it's rental assistance, if you're having trouble with anything, you can call this number, and you'll get assistance. One of the most frustrating things that I have heard and dealt with in our community is when we have violence within our community, the people that have the violence against them will not help the police. They can get shot, and they know who shot them. Instead of working with the police to put these people where they should be, they won't help. So there's not a whole heck of a lot our police force can do if those people that are committing these crimes won't help and will not seek to help, that they need to move forward in life. There's an old adage, I always think about it, when we have all these programs, and I'm sure Mr. Macklemore has no idea about the programs that we have in place. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. And we have so many programs here. I talk to citizens every day that call me with issues that they have, and I say, are you aware of this program that we have? And we put it out in every different way possible. At our cleanup day, we asked, we took a little poll with the commissioners. How did you hear about cleanup day? Do you know about these things that we are doing? Are you aware of the community events that we have every quarter with all of the taxing bodies that are working together finally to resolve these issues to make our city a better place? The people that complain never show up. They never have a solution. But they like to come here and grandstand, and that sickens me. If you're not going to help with our community, move. Very simple. Administrator Naval?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have two items. The first is just a clarification on something that Dan Schulman said. He gave a report on the CJA Act, the Clean Energy Jobs Act. I just want to clarify that that is state funding that we were going after and got passed for compensation for being a nuclear storage site. We are still pursuing federal, the Stranded Act. Those are two separate initiatives that we're working on. So a lot of progress made with the help of our legislators and staff at state level for this. We're still pushing for Stranded Act at a federal level. Again, the mayor mentioned, just talking about a $914,000 alley infrastructure grant took three years before, and I gave him the side eye because you said, we finally got that money, and I went, not yet. We finally got the approval for the money. I'm still waiting for the reimbursement once we get the profit. So I believe it when it's in hand, but that alone took three years and counting. This stuff takes time, but we, as the mayor said, we are in constant discussion with our legislators and with DECO, making sure they don't forget about us. So we're doing that. Second, I want to echo and kind of regroup on everything that we've talked about tonight with our staff. I was talking with the chief a little earlier today, and maybe I'm just getting older and more cynical, but I was asking him, you know, why are we giving commendations for our staff doing their jobs? And I don't believe that, you know, but I don't think that the public always realizes what our staff does, not just public safety, but building, public works, all the city hall staff, on a daily basis would get commendations in any other community. And this is stuff that they see all the time. So to go above and beyond and get that level of service from the employees is way above and beyond what other communities see from their employees. And our employees come in and they do it because that's their job. And, you know, I've said it before, we have rock stars here across the board. They come in here, they work every day. You talk about mental health, and I hear it regularly from our employees, and it tears, I'm sorry, it tears me up because they come and we hear it from each other, we support each other, we don't spread it out there, that's not the place for it. But the toll that serving this community takes on our employees is immense, and they do it. They don't question it, they do it. It's the job. They know what they're here for. So please, whenever possible, let them know that they're appreciated, that you know what they go through, they work hard every day for this community. They give, they give up themselves every day for this community. I wish we could do commendations on every employee here, but we'd be here till 10:00 in the morning, and nobody wants that, so...
We'll turn them out.
Yeah. So just the opportunity to thank all of our employees that keep this place running on a daily basis.
On a very limited budget. I think we should forget that. I think people forget that. We've stretched the dollar so far here with our budget and begging for money. I think my knees are scraped up from begging for people in Springfield.
Well...
It's part of the job, but we've stretched that, we've stretched that dollar so much that we can hear the eagle spring.
Well, and just a quick recap, we have, for people that don't know, we have three inspectors that handle this inspections for, co-compliance for the entire city with help of Director Iansin. That used to be Department 10, I believe. Our street and water division are half of what they used to be, managing a 20-year-old plus aging inspector. It was old back then, we had doubled the staff. It's 20 years older now than even then. Our police and fire are 20% understaffed from what a community our size would be, and that doesn't even count the excessive call volumes that we get compared to those numbers. We get constantly, other communities go approaching the chiefs and the department heads going, how do you guys do it? We do because we have to. That's, and we find a way, and still the employees go above and beyond and dig deep for that despite being taxed on a daily basis. So again, and you guys know this, the entire council knows this, just ask for continued support from the public to appreciate the employees where you can. It's real easy to spread the negative, but a token of appreciation and nod away goes a long way for our staff.
Thank you. Any commissioners have?
Yeah, I've made a few notes. First, I mean, thank you all for sticking in with the long meeting tonight. Ran into Mr. Hartman, the president of Zion Park District at the beginning of the meeting. He wanted to provide his thank you and accommodation to Chief Barton and the police department for the way the July 4th celebration was handled. He said this is, you know, by far one of the best, if not the best, in terms of just coordination and the results of that evening. So he wanted to extend his gratitude and thank you to the chief and the department. So wanted to make sure that went on the record. Also, just in terms of the balancing act that we go through in being, you know, part of city council, you know, part of an elected position, as the chief mentioned, there are some limitations and restrictions that come around that. So me personally, one of the ways that I balance that out is through volunteering my service through positions like the Coalition for Healthy Community. And as we were sitting here, just kind of going through the night, I was making some notes on some of the things that we've been able to accomplish and resources that we do provide to the community. So we've hosted a mental health first aid training for about 30 individuals within Zion. We just held our For Our Youth Golf Outing. That was a success last Friday. We had about 30 to 35 youth from the high school. Our Leadership Academy for Adults is starting up again this fall. And again, that's always open applications. I've mentioned it here before, zbla.info. There was also a community prayer meeting that happened at the high school on Saturday. That was actually well-attended, interdisciplinary, you know, multifaceted in terms of all of the different sects or religions that showed up and just people that came to show their support. And in addition to that, Jesus Name Apostolic Church, they're going to be hosting a prayer service this Friday, and there's also a walk specifically for Zion on Saturday, and that starts at Salem Foods at 12:00 p.m. We also just held a movie night. We had about 50 to 60 individuals come out, different families come and just experience some of the beauty here within Zion. So we held that at the band show. We got a chance to show Encanto and hand out some free popcorn and just allow people to kind of kick back and, you know, enjoy a safe evening with their families. We've also started some partnerships with the Community Works, which is a nonprofit out of Waukegan. So they helped us apply for a grant from the Healthcare Foundation of Northern Lake County. And what that's intended to do is if we get it, we'll be able to do a whole-person study. Ultimately, the outcome of that is we'd like to get resources where we can provide additional staff to the police department and to the fire department to get social workers and additional frontline support that is not, you know, in a police capacity that can go out and extend within the community. And so I'll jump back to that idea of a balancing act, right? Because we're searching out and seeking these kind of grant funds because we're already tapped out in terms of the budget that we have and trying to support the staff that we do have and making sure that we're, you know, as fiscally responsible as we can be. And then in addition, we've also partnered with Employee Connections to successfully run a summer program. We're looking to start an after-school program as well that'll be hosted at New Tech. So we're looking for students that, you know, need assistance with their homework, have interest in leadership skills, and then we're also partnering with the high school on their new CTE building. So that is their career and technical... So, that is their career and technical education facility. So, there's a lot of investment there, and what we're trying to bring are community partnerships, right? So, they can get the training, but they need the corporations and the community partnerships so they can have a place to actually go and apply those skills and get paid so, you know, they'll one day be able to take care of their own families and contribute to, to our city. And I think lastly, just to call out some of the direct meetings that we've had behind the scenes with the state's attorney, because as the chief mentioned, police, when they get called, it's a very reactive thing, right? And they can, they can do their job, they can apprehend suspects, they can arrest, but that's only a part of the solution in terms of, you know, how people are sentenced. And it's a coordinated effort to make sure that, you know, those things are done effectively and that we're bringing the proper charges so that people can, you know, be held accountable for the crimes that they're committing through the community. I think that's all I had. So, again, just thank you all for sticking through with the meeting. We are committed. We look forward to your feedback, you know, where it applies, and we're always looking for different solutions and folks that we can partner with throughout the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Holmes.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Aye. Commissioner Fisher.
Just a, a brief note, you know, thanks to the efforts of Dave Dable and Son Alito. We're moving ahead on economic development. As everybody sees, we have a Starbucks going up over on 173, and that's, it says, you know, any good, any new business is a good business, especially now. And, you know, I, I've seen people say, "Well, nobody's going to pay for coffee at Starbucks who lives in Zion," and it's like, if Starbucks did not think they could make money, they would not be here. That's a basic, fundamental fact. And the fact that they have decided to come here is a very good sign for us because other things will follow after. And so, still support local businesses, still go to It's All Good, still go to CJ's, but if you can, when they're open, stop in and grab a coffee or a muffin or whatever every once in a while. Other people will come, and hopefully they will be successful. So, more economic stuff coming down the pike, and hopefully we'll be able to announce that soon.
I'll try to be brief, but I do want to reiterate some things. Thanks for the, the update on the economic development. Starbucks, Popeyes is coming. We, we, I, I do get a kick out of people when they say about businesses coming here, and it's usually, I'd say, a three- to five-year process to bring businesses in. And in May or June, Dave, Administrator Naval, Son Alito, our Economic Development Director, and I went out to Vegas to the ICSC Retail Show where we spent three days walking the convinces that are talking to businesses about coming to Zion. And one of the things that Commissioner Fisher mentioned, that well, now that Starbucks is here, and I, I remember when I first got in the office, everybody, I heard people saying, "How come we don't have a Starbucks? How do we, how come we don't have a Starbucks?" And then hear a business that went out of business, "Well, how come that business went out of business? When's the last time you've been there?" Well, five years. So, for businesses to sustain themselves, we have to support them. Starbucks has done an in-depth study of our community. We talked to them four years ago, and they said Zion is not the place for us. We kept knocking on the door. We weren't going to take none. Same with Popeyes, and I'm, I'm telling you, there's some great things coming. Rome wasn't built in a day, but we have a very hardworking crew. And I, I am, I'm proud to be the mayor, and I'm proud to work with the people that I work with in the city. I really am. It's been a real privilege and an honor for me to do that. When I work with the commissioners and I see how hard they work and the comments that we, the calls we get from citizens that we address individually, as again, some people don't stay really informed about what we do. My days, in addition to working with Dave and Commissioner Fisher, our commissioners and our department heads about keeping up on everything, I'm out doing some of the legislative work. I am meeting and talking with legislators, just met with some legislators in Frankfurt about the local government distributor fund, which we have been trying to get increased. I'm a vice president with the Illinois Municipal League. So, we've been extending our reach in public to make sure that we get the resources here that we need. We've been a community that's been overlooked for years, and the one thing that I've known and we've talked about for, for years now is that for us to get some of these grants, we've got to go out and let people know we're here and we need the help. And we've done that. Springfield trips. I can't tell you how many calls or meetings I've had with legislators. Two weeks ago, I met with the EPA, the director of the EPA for this region, to talk about the nuclear spent fuel rods and our concerns about them being on the shores of Lake Michigan. They are looking into this, and this is one of their priorities. I serve on the Mayor's Commission for Water Equity, which is a commission that works with all the mayors along the lake shore here in Wisconsin and also the Great Lakes, Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, 177 cities, U.S. and Canada mayors, that are trying to deal with the erosion issues that we have, being able to take back our lakefront and development. We work tireless hours, and we're proud to do so. This is what we were elected to do, and one of the reasons that for me, coming back here and being able to work with such a great staff to improve our community. There's not a day that goes by that we're not thinking about how to do things better, more efficiently, more cost-effective, how to bring in more money to get to things that we need to have done, our streets repaired. Those commissions that I, I'm on, I'm able to talk with those people and have some money directed our way, which is absolutely terrific. Again, for our citizens that come here and know me, I'm pretty, pretty laid back, but there are a few things that push my buttons, and maybe they shouldn't. And I was reading something that said, you know, "You can't blame a clown for acting like a clown, you just have to stop going to the circus." So, after tonight, I'm not going to the circus. I always try to represent our community, but I will not let anyone talk ill about our community and what we're not doing. You look at these men and women in this room, and we work our tails off, and we enjoy it. We enjoy it. So, anyway, the last thing that I have to say today is just reiterating, we won't have a Labor Day parade this year. We have a new events committee that decided we're going to wait a year, and really because of some of the incidents that have happened in the planning, that we will have a fantastic Labor Day parade next, next year. On September 5th, we will continue to have the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which is, which is at Zion Benton High School. There's information on our website about it, or there'll be information on it. It's the 52nd year of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and all the mayors from the different communities come in and our residents get together, and we, we talk about our city and how we can improve it. So, if you want to attend that, please look up the information on the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on September 5th. Those festivities will still go on. Announcements, September 5th, the city offices will be closed for the holiday, and that's the same day for the prayer breakfast, so please come out to the high school and, and join the elected officials from all around the county in the state that will be here. On September 6th, we'll have our first city council meeting at 7:00 PM here, and we will also try to make sure the razzle-dazzle, baton-twirling court team is here so we can recognize them. September 20th, 6 o'clock, a Zion Township Board meeting, and at 7:00 PM, Zion City Council meeting. Item number 13, number 13, sorry, I've been talking so much this evening. Item number 13, closed section, session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, open meetings for the discussion of filed pending probable or imminent litigation, collective bargaining, purchase or sale of real estate, legal counsel, and personnel. We will come out after closed sessions. We have one item on the agenda, and then we will adjourn if you want to stay until after the closed session. It might be a while. If not, thank you for coming out. Thank you for your participation and care for our community. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Fryerson, second by Fisher. Clerk, please call the world.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor, we can.
Aye.